Over twenty first to order, please. Could I get a roll call?
Mayor Delaney.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
And Councilmember Colback.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Could you please rise for our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there any additions, changes, or deletions to our agenda? And hearing none, I'd seek approval of our agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains the following items for approval. The September sixteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes, the October third, twenty twenty four special meeting minutes, the October seventh, twenty twenty four special meeting minutes, the October seventh, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes, the October eleventh, twenty twenty four special meeting minutes, the payment of claims, listing of bills, and the September financial reports. And I'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Thank you. Uh, community concerns is up on the agenda. Did we have anyone sign in for a community concern, Steph?
Uh, we did not and never received any phone calls or emails.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
We'll go on to reports then, and up first is the Chamber of Commerce, Erica.
All right, uh, there's a packet coming around for each of you, so thank you for having me and good evening. We have a lot of things going on, as is always the case through, uh, throughout the year. Um, but what I did is I made a copy, so the first page of your, um, of your packets there, um, contain just a copy of the, our community calendar of events for October and November. And then I just want to kind of highlight some of the things coming up for both you, as well as kind of the listening public, um, ways people can get involved, um, opportunities for businesses, um, and, um, just. Got an echo. All right, there we go. Um, for those on TV, I could hear myself assigning me, and that was a little, little disconcerting. Um, but in any event, so they can see all the things we have coming up, both from an entertainment standpoint with our community, as well as just different opportunities for businesses, um, and, and other, uh, other options. So, um, one thing I just wanted to point out, um, because we have, uh, um, several nonprofits and, and, um, and various organizations that are always looking for what the ever popular "We Need Funding." So today was the deadline for the Grant Gala through the Pipestone Area Community Foundation and affiliate of Southwest Initiative Foundation. And they, so if you didn't get it in by five, you're too late on that one. But, um, I bring it up because they are going to be making their decisions. And then this is their first annual Grant Gala. This is a new event for them. And what they're trying to highlight is that short of building an entire, you know, um, uh, like the Hiawatha Lodge, or the Schroeder Center, or whatnot, that there are opportunities as well for smaller grants. And so they are going to be awarding, uh, ten grants, up to twenty-five hundred dollars each. And all of those applications are in. I think they received, um, around, last time I checked with their, uh, chair, I think, yeah, I think they're close to thirty. So it just shows that we have a lot of great organizations in our town doing a lot of great work and, um, and looking for funding. So we should have some really good options. And everyone is invited, the public, um, as well, on Thursday, November seventh, um, at five to seven at Schroeder Center where they'll be announcing, um, those awards. So that is exciting. If you missed out on that and you're like, shoot, then don't miss out on this one. So this is the United Way of Pipestone County. They do an annual rolling calendar for their applications. So those are due on Wednesday before Thanksgiving by five P M. So that, that date is Wednesday, November twenty seventh. So if you are a nonprofit out there, or a unit of government, whatnot, then a public agency, it's a, it's a pretty simple application. It's a two-page one and they're, but they have to be received by five o'clock on November twenty seventh, and they award annually. Um, additionally, how that's funded is through local donations. So they are running their capital campaign right now. Their goal is forty thousand dollars this year, and that runs through that time period as well, and that helps enable them to make those grants. Um, another, the, I think they're selling raffle tickets as well, so just check your Chamber newsletter or, um, or the, uh, United Way site on our business directory, and we have links to the application and other information about the capital campaign. So moving on from, from money, probably the first things coming up, if you look at your calendar, are we have a lot of, uh, chamber networking and other opportunities. The first one comes up tomorrow, and that is October twenty second at ten A M. We're holding our Chamber Coffee, um, and tour of Three Strands Lutheran Parish. Um, and we're holding it at the Pipestone Church, which is our Savior's Lutheran Church. Um, that'll be at ten A M. And when we scheduled this, we did not know that Pastor Muller, Bob Muller, would be leaving our community, he and Amy. But that's a good chance of someone wants to come there, even if you're not. I mean, you're more than welcome. Everyone's welcome to attend that event. And if you just would like to go there, um, he's been with our community, I want to say at least fourteen years between his work through the various parishes, um, and then recently then when they became, uh, a tri parish in twenty seventeen. So, so if you want a, an opportunity to, to thank him and Amy, then you can show by there. They maybe do other, other things with the church, too. It's just, um, we want to go and celebrate their membership and their investment in our community, and also give people a chance to learn about what they do. So, but that's just kind of a side note. So that'll be at ten A M. He's promised some sort of fall dessert, because Tom has the powers of persuasion, I guess. So there'll be some delicious treat they'll be having. On the twenty-third, then that will, you also have a flyer that looks like this. This is the cover of the, um, dedication and ribbon cutting, so over the very next day, which will be this Wednesday, is the Schroeder Center, um, dedication by the Pipestone Area Community Foundation, dedicating it from them to the Pipestone Senior Center. And then we'll be also holding up ribbon cutting at the same time. There'll be thank you remarks from the Senior Center, the food shelf, and also Southwest Initiative Foundation. We'll have representatives attending as well. The Pipestone Ministerial Association will be blessing it. And then, uh, we'll, um, conclude with then our chamber ribbon cutting. All that will be outside. Then everyone will come inside, and there'll be open house tours and refreshments. So, um, this is huge investment. I know the city made a huge investment, as well as many, many donors, and you know, the senior center's after me, they'll probably tell you even more. Um, but, um, a great opportunity to come in, see the great things they're doing there, kind of see how it works. And then for an opportunity for the public to see on the other side, kind of how the food shelf works and, and how those enhanced facilities help serve their work. So, um, those two things this week. Um, on Saturday, Saturday's a busy day. Um, there's, uh, it's, uh, kind of that Saturday before Halloween. So of course, there's the annual, sixth annual, um, Monster Mash Party at the Legion for kids. This is the annual youth mentor hunt through the Pipestone County Citizens Forever for all of the people who attend that. This is one of the things they, they fund yearly, and so get your kids registered. You do have to be pre-registered. I think it's by the twenty-fourth. That would be this, I think, this Thursday. Check our, check the date, check my date, not for me. But the event is this Saturday, and it's always a really important thing to talk about conservation of land, as well as, um, hunter safety and get kids involved, um, in that outdoor, uh, recreation. Um, and then that evening, uh, Dennis Warner, he's a guitarist and vocalist, will be part of the Pipestone Performing Arts Center's, um, presenter series. So, and that is kind of the first, and I'm going to skip ahead just while we're talking about that one, of several opportunities coming up to attend various performances at our own art center. So instead of like paying all that gas and a lot more money, you know, that we have high-quality acts, both touring as well as locally and regionally that perform here. So if you're looking for things to do, either with your family, within people coming into town to visit you over the holidays, or with your businesses, um, for like an employee appreciation or a holiday party, super easy. Don't have to plan. That is a good, a good opportunity. That would be one. There's also another one, if you flip, uh, the page, on the Wednesday, the twenty-seventh. So right to celebrate getting your United Way grant in, you can head over to the art center that evening, and it's Christmas with Lori Line. She's a fabulous pianist, so she'll be doing her holiday show. Um, and then the first week of, uh, the thirtieth, we'll be dueling duos at the Legion, and then back to the, um, art center. Then that first week, I believe it's Thursday through Sunday, our first week of December will be Al Oplens and their Christmas show. So, um, and then they also have, uh, oh gosh, I forgot the date, but there's, um, another date in December where it's going to be, uh, Mick Sterling, and he's going to be doing kind of an Elvis Christmas, Elvis and Gospel Christmas, and he does a great job. You, um, they, they perform, um, he and his group perform up at Chanhassen all the time. But you're going to pay probably, you're going to add a zero to the ticket price if you go up there. So just make sure you're taking advantage of these things. Um, our art center works really hard to apply for grants, and, and there's lots of opportunities to celebrate the holidays here, or to reward your staff. Um, so we'll skip back. Um, the next flyer is the, um, childcare, which Justin's on the agenda, and he'll probably be talking more about that. But even if you haven't signed up, right, Justin, they can still come, including. Yes, yes. And so, and definitely, I mean, it would be great, um, just speaking as one of the members of the core team for that. It'd be great to see, you know, all the city staff there, to see, um, the, you know, the, the, our city council people. If you haven't already registered, I mean, this is an opportunity. Justin applied for that. We've got a great community core team together, and just an opportunity to come together and look at that as the workforce behind our workforce. Um, what they're going to do at that meeting is kind of go over the, um, the surveys that many of you may have part, taken place in, childcare, uh, local childcare, local employer, and then local parent and employee surveys. We're going to give all that data back, as well as some other. Then you'll break up into groups, um, to, to look at some areas and identify challenges, things we're doing well, things we're not, and potential solutions. So that will, that's an important meeting. It's free. You get to eat, but it's going to be the night. So you'll buckle in from about five to nine P M. And that is Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, at the country club. The thirty-first, um, would move you on to your next flyer. And so this is our annual, um, trunk or treat and downtown candy walk. That'll be Thursday, right on Halloween, from four-thirty to six. I know sometimes, you know, there's, people are like, oh my goodness, this is cutting down on folks coming to, to our houses, and that is not our intent whatsoever. The goal of this, I just want to say while I have the opportunity, was to keep people here, because we heard from parents that everyone was going either to Laverne or Flandrew, and that's great, but we want them to stay here. And so, um, so that's why we purposely made it early, so it's still nice and bright. Plenty of time to either, I think at five-thirty is usually when Good Sam, um, has the residents there, and so you can come downtown. Then you could head out there for even more candy and make all those residents stay, and then still plenty of daylight hours. And I don't know, maybe they don't do this now. I don't have kids, but we went out after dark, too, like for, for, uh, for door-to-door. So, um, plenty of opportunity to go around and, and help get all the, the sugar you need for the year. Um, so that will be from four-thirty to six. Uh, you can still register. You do have to be pre-registered. Just call the Chamber and we can, and it can be anyone. You don't need to be a Chamber member. It can be, um, uh, any kind of, but you do need to be either a nonprofit, like a church. We don't allow like individual people or like families. So just an organized, either a club, school, um, uh, business, nonprofit, service club, uh, church. Am I missing anything? Team, sports team. We've had sports teams before, and band usually participates. So everyone is welcome. There's no cost, and we can walk you through what it looks like to do that. And then just a reminder to businesses that we close off the street at three o'clock that day. So, um, have your customers, um, and yourself or employees make sure that you know that from Clothe Year by Dawn down to Liberty Pond will be, um, will be shut off. Um, then, um, we kind of, that takes us through October. Um, will be, then on November fourth, we have another chamber ribbon cutting coming up. And this one will be for the restored historic Split Rock, Rock Bridge. So, um, so that is the, for those people that don't know, that is the oldest single-span stone arch bridge in the state. Um, they've gone through a process, and that's been closed off while they've like literally been taking it apart, stone by stone. And now it's done and ready to be celebrated. And so, um, the representatives from the county will be there and will be out down in Island. So everyone come down to that. That'll be at eleven-thirty A M. And so everyone is invited and encouraged to attend that. Um, on the seventh, the library has their community read book discussion. And then again, that's that Grant Gala where those local, lucky local nonprofits who've received grants will be notified. Um, then kind of jumping down, I'm going to skip the thirteenth, um, just because we're going to talk about that at the end. But, uh, uh, the chamber, we have another chamber ribbon cutting and open house celebration that is November eighteenth. That's a Monday, as is November fourth. So two weeks later, then we'll have another one, and that will be at the Minders Community Library. Bob Minders will be there. It'll be in, uh, an opportunity for folks to thank him, to be able to tour the facility. It's amazing. It's been expanded on into the part that originally was kind of that garage area, if, for those people that haven't been in the library lately. Um, so I'd encourage everyone to come there, express their appreciation, and, um, and come see how, how great a facility we have. Um, the twenty-first is the next item down on this handout, and that is the nineteenth Annual Chamber Chili Cookoff and Silent Auction fundraiser. It's a huge fundraiser for the Chamber to be able to, um, do all the work that we do, and, um, and it's just a lot of fun. And I think we might, I'm not sure, I haven't, I should have asked Tom before I got up here. But we, we might have a couple of spots, but we're either, so, we're either close to being full or, or full with teams, and we are capped at seventeen. Um, the theme this year is dynamic duos, so we've got a whole bunch of folks coming. So if you always want to see, you know, local celebrities, and you're not, you don't want to travel to Hollywood, then you can come see Taylor Swift and Travis Kelce will be there. So that'll be fun. I mean, that's, uh, we're, you know, we're Swifties. We're, we're there. Um, uh, the, uh, uh, the Hans and Franz, if you remember that, if you're older like me, they're there to pump you up with lots of chili. Um, and so, uh, who else, Tom? The Mario and Luigi, um, for the younger ones. Um, Bo and Luke Duke, how do I forget that? So lots of celebrities you'll see there. So come on out to that. That's at the, the, um, at the country club, and you get a ton of food, more chili than you can eat, frankly, and a lot of fun. The teams put a lot of effort into it and a perfect time to kind of kick off your holiday shopping. So, um, at our silent auction, we've got some great items coming in there. Um, then some more kind of, uh, Christmas, uh, things coming up in November. On the sixteenth is Atlas's Christmas Rummage and Boutique. Um, it's a Saturday, the very next day, the twenty-third, um, or excuse me, the very next week, I should say, the next Saturday, the twenty-third, is the museums having a Christmas ornament workshop for adults. Um, so that's really cool, being able to utilize that refurbished space so that they now have in the front there for programming. Um, we've talked about kind of those, uh, events on the twenty-seventh. Um, and then the thirtieth would be the next item on this sheet, which is Shop Small, um, Saturday, so Small Business Saturday. And, um, this, we hold this annually through the Chamber and organize that. There's a holiday vendor fair. Um, we put all of the local hot deals on pipestoneminnesota.com. There's a link, a pink one, right on the homepage that once those are ready, we provide free coffee and donuts to give you some energy. There's prizes, more. And then that evening, of course, is dueling duos at the Legion, and then also the kickoff for Lates at the Lodge. So, um, a lot going on there. Now then, uh, one quick, I brought this up with me just as a reminder while we're talking about holidays. So I serve on the Veterans and Royal Committee, as do many folks in this room. And, um, we are plugging away at still continuing to raise funds. Um, I know that we are over, I know we're for sure over the hundred thousand, and, and I think over the hundred and twenty-five, I'm safe to say, maybe even one fifty. I'm looking over at our, at our treasurer, close, close to one fifty. But with the holidays coming up, we, we take a lot of phone calls for this, and so one of the things, and I can't take credit for this. This was a family, um, member, but I thought it was a great idea. They are getting together. So if you've got a relative, and they are humble, and, um, or they're just hard to buy for, and you'd like to honor them, then we've had families contacting us about going together with the siblings and putting your relative's name on the memorial. And that's a perfect idea. I think it's a great opportunity. If you're not sure and you want it to be a surprise, we've gotten those requests as well. Just call the Chamber, and we're happy to look that up. And in some cases, they've been able to accomplish that. And then in other words, I'm like, sorry, your dad beat you to it. So, um, so that's, uh, but just, we're still plugging away at that. We appreciate the donation of the, the land, and, um, we get closer every, every day, every, every work, um, every fundraiser. So then the last thing is a flyer that's in front of you right here. And this is, um, this is a project that the Chamber, and we're pretty excited about. Um, we, turning over my sheet here to October fourth, we held sort of a kickoff event, but it also was a standalone. So if you didn't attend that, that's okay. Um, but that was held at, uh, kind of regionally in Slaton at Key Largo. And we had about sixty different employers, um, and, and workforce folks there, um, representing businesses, or just really anyone who has employees, whether they're a nonprofit or a for-profit business. And how this came to be is, um, so now we're kicking off our workforce cohorts, which is a training that will go over five months, starting in November, and then it will end in March, and it's once a month. And it's, um, for locally here, it'll be a three-hour commitment. Two of those hours will be virtual, and then the last hour will be in person. And so, um, and basically, the organizations on the bottom of your flyer there, which is the Pipestone Area Chamber of Commerce, the Marshall Area Chamber, Ford Worthington, which is their Chamber in Economic Development, and then Redwood Area Chamber in Tourism. The four regional co-, um, chambers, applied with Southwest Minnesota Private Industry Council for one of Minnesota Deed, Department of Employment and Economic Development's Drive for Five Initiative Grants. And basically, um, in a nutshell, and I've talked a lot, so I'll go very quickly. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me. Um, but the, um, essentially, the, our state identified that we have two hundred thousand jobs that we need filled. Um, so, and Pipestone certainly has, um, has workforce issues as well, but we're not alone. Um, so what they did is they developed a program where various entities could apply. We partnered and collaborated with these groups, um, to make sure some of that money came down to Southwest Minnesota and to help our businesses, um, and our employers down here. And basically, it's kind of a two-part grant. Um, Southwest Minnesota Private Industry Council is working on kind of the training of workforce folks, um, with our, our great educational entities, like so Minnesota West, all their campuses, as well as MSU. And then they're working with those kind of grads. But then this component with the Chamber and, and Southwest Pick, we're working on, um, on, once those graduates have graduated, trying to get them placed and kept here where we want them. And obviously, in the region is great, in Pipestone or Pipestone County, even better. So that's, that's our goal. Um, but the other component of this is towards employers. Um, we found that a lot of them, you know, they're busy, they don't have the resources or the time, or maybe, you know, the investment. It's a lot of money to bring in a consultant or a specialist. So what we did is we developed this training. Um, the sessions are going to be led by, uh, Whitney Hart, Whitney Harvey, who's the Senior Director of Workforce Diversity Inclusion for the Minnesota Chamber Foundation, as well as various guest speakers, depending on which topic we're talking about at each one of those. So the trainings will be held, and what they're designed to do, we've designed it with in-house. This is not a prepackaged program. The four chambers came together and said, we want something really practical, from a business-oriented, not an academic perspective, that we can look, look at our workforce, assess where we're at, and be able to identify, you know, kind of ways that we need help, a plan to move forward with recruitment, retention, um, employee satisfaction, all of those things that are important for workforce needs. Um, so that's, that's what it will be focused on. The, you'll get the benefit, the, the attendees of being able, on the November, December, January, and February dates, of being able to not have to travel, you know, in, within to the region, because you'll just come to a, a location that will be announced, um, here in Pipestone, um, and then meet together, and then you'll have, um, so you'll have that regional perspective. Um, but then we're going to add on some time where we'll have, um, lunch, and then they'll be able to kind of work locally within their local cohort to, to brainstorm, to make those connections, to work on, um, suggestions together. So as long as we have them together, it only makes sense to have them, um, meet collectively here. Um, so, so, and then the very last fifth meeting will be in person. Um, these, these trainings are quite expensive. If you were to hire Whitney, she has a very, that's how the Minnesota Chamber makes their money, is by, she gets recruited out, and you pay an hourly or a project fee as a business. So this is an opportunity to do it for free. Most of that funding is being covered through the grant that we wrote the grant for. Um, we put an approximate value at five hundred and twenty-five. Honestly, I think that's probably pretty low. Um, after this, I just looked at like Growth Mankato did one, and they were charging seven hundred and fifty dollars a participant. Frankly, I think ours is just as good, if not better. So, um, but, so it will be completely free. You just have to, the employee, employers have to have the resources to make sure to commit for someone to come. It is open to any employer. You do not need to be a Chamber member. You do not need to live in one of these four communities. As long as you're in one of those fourteen counties, you're eligible. Um, and then, uh, you could be, you can be a nonprofit. So anyone who hires employees is, is welcome to come. And so we're pretty excited about it. The deadline is November eighth, and I just checked, and I think we already have about nine people already, and I haven't really promoted it yet. Those were people who saw a value when they attended on the fourth, but we have nine people signed up already from Pipestone that will be, um, engaging in this process, so.
Well, good. All right. Any questions from the council? Well, thank you, Erica. It's always good to hear from you, and, uh, a lot going on in Pipestone. And the Chamber, uh, calendar, such a valuable resource. And if you're thinking about putting on any type of event whatsoever, um, contact the Chamber and make sure you get on that calendar, so we don't have conflicts. Because there's nothing worse than having two good things to go to at the same time, you know, that's, we want to have it split up a little bit, so. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is, uh, Senior Center.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Wheatz, and I'm President of the Board for the Senior Center.
Hello, Joanne.
We would like to reiterate what Erica said about our ribbon cutting and our open house. Would certainly like to invite the council to come, take a tour of our building. We'll have light refreshments. If you have any questions, our board will be there. So we would certainly like to have you all come if, if you can take time out of your busy schedule. Um, the center has been very active these last few months. We have had several fundraisers. We had a Rope Your Float fundraiser. Hank's Foods had their Rib and Hamburger Cookout fundraiser for us. Alice Erickson had a Taco fundraiser for us. And we also have one more left this year, before we'll end all of our fundraising and ask for money. This is going to be our third annual Holiday Vendor and Craft Fair. And that will be held on Saturday, November the ninth. It's going to be out at the Pipestone High School in the Commons area, and it'll be from nine until two. We already have around fifty vendors that have signed up and will be present. We are going to have a silent auction, and lunch will be served by members of the Senior Center. And this is a free advance. There's no charge to come to this, um, uh, craft fair. We've also had two defensive driving classes in the past few months. Both were very well-attended, so we have some good driving senior citizens out there. Um, there are no more classes scheduled for this year, however, there will be some classes in the spring. We haven't got a date on those yet. We've also had several speakers that have been to the center over the past few months, that have shared a lot of interesting topics with us. We also have the gals from the Minders Library coming yet this week. And they're going to demonstrate their cricket machine that they have available at the library. And what they're going to do with that is they're going to work with our outreach committee, and they are going to, and other interested members, it's open to all the members, to come and see how this machine works, and to help us to continue to make our crafts that we take out to the Good Sam and to Falls Landing for stud-ends. So they're going to help us with that. After all of our activities, we did take some time off to have a very relaxing evening. We had a campfire, a weenie roast, and smores out at the Hiawatha Park that our members enjoyed. And we would just like to thank the council for all your continued support of the center. I don't know if you have any questions for me about anything, but otherwise, thank you very much.
Any questions from anyone? Well, thank you, Joanne. The work you do. Well, thank you, Joanne. The work you do, it's a fabulous uh facility. We're certainly glad to have it here.
Thank you.
Next up is the museum.
All the chairs with me here. Wake up, Justin. Well, thanks for having me here today. Um, I do, I I believe you have my quarterly report in your packet, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. Um, I know we've talked about it before, but our internship this summer uh was very successful and we we are planning to continue that again next summer. We had a college student in, she um gained experience in several areas of museum work and uh particularly she researched and presented programming and then also one thing that she was interested in doing was learning more about the museum, specific museum software that we use. And so we had her uh deep into that and she was instrumental in working on our Chesley Glass Plate Negative um project. So that just takes me into our Past Perfect Online. And this year, the um Historical Society Board really has committed to making our collection more accessible to the public. So the we launched it October first, so the link to it is on our website. Or you can just go right to it at um Pipestone Muse- Pipestone County Museum slash pastperfect.com. And that'll take you right to our collection as well. And so we do have um our last segment of our Chesley Glass Plate Negative Collection is going to go up next Tuesday. Uh, and then the entire collection of over three hundred images will be available to search online by the public wherever you are. So uh we're really, really proud to have that out there and that is just going to be the tip of the iceberg. So uh, we already have scheduled immediately after that to um share um our Julia Lenholm Ruthen Collection. She in nineteen fifty-eight. Um, I got a new camera, I guess, and went around the town of Ruthen and took a picture of every single building in town and labeled it. So so and that includes residences, residences and um businesses. So we will have that up for searching as well. So and we'll just go on from there. It won't all be photographs. We're going to get some of our um uh material objects up, three D objects. So just a portion at a time as as we're able to do that, but we are committed to doing that. So that'll there'll be more and more of that online. Also, uh, I wanted, I know I I've mentioned this before too, but our newspaper digitization project. And as I had said, that um the historic newspaper collection of all the newspapers in Pipestone County, they are not available anywhere uh digitized online. They're not on newspapers dot com. They're not on newspaperarchives dot com. They're 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 not accessible. So we have um in a in a collaboration with the Minder's Library and the Pipestone Area School Library. We are working together to make um make those also available to the public online. Um, we wanted to go, we didn't want to go, you know, the newspaper dot com, the ancestry route, because we wanted it to not be behind a paywall. So we wanted it to be free and available to the public. Um, we're making this available. So we're using the museum's newspaper collection on microfilm uh to start with and we have divided it into four phases. Um, the first phase being all the papers um so from around the county then from eighteen seventy-nine to nineteen fifteen. And we thought we'd just start at the beginning. We weren't going to start with a certain town and um and get them all on there. So we are almost uh fully funded for the first phase and I really see that that will go forward after the first of the year and we'll be able to to start with that. So that is very exciting. It's also going to be searchable. It'll have the OCR, the Optical Character Recognition, so you can search by word. And um it's going to be great.
Yeah. Uh, that is good.
The um, the Ferris Grand Project, first of all, I wanted to report on our grant project. I had a little typo in my notes or the the report I gave you. So the um, we are still wrapping up the final reports through the state for the work that was done. Um, the next phase will be repointing the east, south and west walls. And the grant, uh, the next grant round is in May of twenty twenty-five. It will be awarded in October of twenty twenty-five. So realistically, the work will be done in twen- uh twenty twenty-six. And I had the the wrong year down there for that. So um in other Ferris Grand news, the uh, we just had seen the installation of the new stage doors on the building when somebody drove through them. So we are, uh, we immediately ordered a new pair of doors because that takes a lot of time to get those um delivered and painted and and ready to be installed. So that um is in the works already. We're working with the Pipestone County Sheriff and our insurance company. And of course, the Performing Arts Center um to see that building repaired. So uh before it gets too wintery out would be would be good. Uh, with our programming here in the last quarter, um through the summer, we had uh our uh District Number Three Schoolhouse was open out at Moore Park. And that again was with volunteer schoolteacher Diane Hansen. She does a wonderful job out there. Uh, we do offer that programming every Thursday in the summer between uh Memorial Day and Labor Day. That's just our general window with that. And we had at least a dozen kids there every week. It's not always the same kids, but we're just happy to see um the community's involvement with that, with the building. So we did uh implement some new safety procedures and everything went really well. We do have uh participants sign an emergency contact form and we have um we always have two staff people there, well Diane and a staff person there as well. So um this fall, we did receive a craft grant from the Prairie Lands Library Exchange in part to fund uh craft supplies because Diane does a lot of different um construction paper and all kinds of um crafts out there. And then um also that craft grant is going to fund our ornament making workshop that we're going to be having. So uh, the cemetery tours again um continue to have a wonderful response from the public. And then we do offer monthly coffee talks and that has really gone to um a rotation of the staff. We just come across so many interesting stories um at the museum that we just decided to just put them together and present them to the public. And if you're not able to attend that in person, it is on our YouTube page. So we do uh post those on our YouTube page and we we get quite a following there from all of our members who aren't uh with, you know, within driving distance even. So uh, just some miscellaneous things. We're still working on our new uh updated webpage. It is under development. Uh, we're in the process of upgrading the museum security and we um we're going to be entering our annual membership drive beginning in November. And uh we just wrapped up our business membership drive and thanks to all the businesses that do support us. Um, our, we're continuing the Small Town Series Booklets. We're we are kind of covered all of the little little towns in Pipestone County. And so we've moved on to some interesting topics and this book this year is Medical Intrigues of Pipestone County. So lots of interesting medical stories. Um, and then our upcoming events, I just wanted to let you know, and Erica covered some of those on November twenty-third. We have um the uh folded paper ornament workshop for adults. Uh, we do have another coffee talk, November twenty-first. And um then during this, during Christmas break, we are offering uh on December twenty-ninth, a morning program for youth um on map making. And we've got some activities and um some of our maps. Um, they can be involved in. And then in the afternoon, uh, a butter making. Uh, I don't want to say workshop. It's just kind of fun to get the kids to to churn some butter and and check that out. So that's over Christmas break.
You have any crackers and taste testing later on?
We will, yes.
Yeah, good. All right. Well, thank you, Susan. There's always a lot going on at the museum and certainly appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions for Susan? Thanks again.
Okay.
Okay. Airport, Rob, you're up.
I'll make it. Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
There's been a lot, quite a few things happening out there. I'll start with the day. They took the big doors off of the that building number twenty. And uh, it's a good thing they did take them off because of the day before, last week, they it finally broke down again. So it just, it was totally unsafe. The new doors go in Wednesday. Um, that's the hydraulic door. And uh, that'll be n- nice when that's all done. The uh, as far as the AWAS system goes, I talked to Min- Mendat again. And they uh said it's uh, it's on their schedule. It's supposed to be done this fall yet. They better hurry up.
Yeah.
It's uh
Would like to see that done.
Yeah, me too. The um uh, the individual from uh Mendat was here the other day and did an inspection. And he was happy with everything. I didn't get anything bad from him. I don't know if you did or not, Deb, but
Everything was good.
He was happy, so we were too. The um uh, Dokndorf, I had them out. And way back in the spring, when the Minnesota Pollution Control was out there, we had an item that wasn't working. And they get a little upset with that because it has to do with the fuel. And the thing is, what they got, what they don't understand is the fact that there's an interstitial testing done to make sure the tank doesn't, isn't leaking into the center tank. And it's just a tube that goes down, but that tube is not waterproof. So water can come in from the top. And when we have water that goes over the top of the fill pipe for the fuel, naturally, we're going to get it down there. But uh, I found out that some people just don't understand that water will find its own little hole. And uh Dokndorf is working on how they're going to prevent that ever happening again. But they did fix the the problem that we had. So that's been taken care of. And so the pollution control should be happy. Makes us happy anyway. The um the other thing is the um see Dokndorf pappy lights and the rails. They're all in. They, I talked to the engineer and they got to get a the flight check. And before they can do the flight check, Mendat's got to come down and make sure they're adjusted right. Um, everything takes time, I guess. But sometimes uh I keep after them for some reason. Their time schedule is different than mine. I mean, I want it done now.
Sure.
And it should have been done a couple of weeks ago already. So the um like I say, everything has uh been going good. No complaints. Hangers are all full. I know we at the last commission meeting, we were talking about an eighty by eighty building. And uh, I think sometimes we we should justify what we're going to get. Now, I don't know how that funding was supposed to work. And I was going to talk to you about that again. That's what I was going to talk to you about, Dan. I forgot. Had a senior moment. And um, but the thing is, we need more hangers actually. Because we have more of them coming in from Sioux Falls. And which is good. Because the more they fly, the more they burn up fuel and we make money off of the fuel and of course off the hanger. So, but um, like I said, I'll, I'll try to answer any question you might have. I might have the answer.
Any questions from the council for Rob? Oh, well, thanks for your efforts out there, Rob. I know it's a big, big job and you keep doing such a great job on it. We want to see you around as long as we can. So
Well.
Appreciate all your work.
I plan on being here every day, but
Good. Yeah.
I will say this much, that the uh city guys have done a great job of taking care of the lawn. And I got the the big high grasses mowed before Mendat got there, thank goodness.
Good.
Because if it's higher than that, then it's a a gig against us.
Sure.
The um but everything else, like I say, everything always seems to fall in place. Okay.
Good.
And I got a couple of people to keep me going straight.
Did, did you have any uh wind damage out there with all this uh wind we've had lately?
Uh, none.
That that didn't have anything to do with that door failing? Okay.
Everything out of it. It blew everything from down south up here.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm waiting for the wind to turn around so we can blow it back.
Yeah. Send the leaves up to Lake Benton.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Rob.
You betcha.
Next up is the EDA. Justin.
Me again. Um, Friday, we closed on our Minnesota West Project House at six twenty-two, Third Ave, Southwest. I was going to congratulate Alejandro and Maria and welcome them to Pipestone. Um, we close on another Southwest Acres Lot next month. Construction's underway on a house out there right now. Another one should be starting soon. Three lots currently remain with the rebate program where the EDA refunds your fifteen thousand dollar purchase price. If you build a home within two years. August fourteenth, we had our Rural Childcare Innovation Program Childcare Provider Appreciation Event. It was attended by twenty-four local childcare providers. They got a meal, they got prizes, gifts and some training. Our next event is next Tuesday. We're having a town hall. That's where we're going to gather all our survey results and uh community input to make a plan to go forward to work on our childcare issues that we have. This month, October, Lakes Gas moved into one of the um office spaces across the hall. So I've got two more of them available. Um, a hundred bucks a month. If anybody wants to start a new business, give me a call.
And and Lakes Gas is uh propane?
Propane, yeah.
They also took over that uh CHS property over on twenty-three. Is that correct?
That's where they have their fuel.
Yeah, okay.
This is just the office.
Is that for businesses or is that for the general public?
That's for public. If you have a propane tank.
You can get a tank filled there and yeah, good. Another option. Thank you.
September, I worked with city staff and the sheriff's department. We were taking care of public nuisances and we sent out over thirty letters and in that month. Um, multiple vehicles were towed from different locations. And I think more than half the people took steps to remediate it themselves. They did not, they're forwarded on to the attorney and uh for uh legal remedies. Um, September twenty-third to twenty-seventh, I was in uh Duluth. I attended the Minnesota Economic Development Foundation Basic Economic Development Course. We learned a lot about workforce development, community development, managing EDOs, business expansion, retention. Got to meet a lot of other economic developers from around the state and learn a lot of new ideas. And uh, I was also found out this month that I was one of four individuals in the nation to receive a professional development scholarship to attend the National Rural Economic Development Association Conference next month in Omaha. So learn as much as I can and bring it home.
Well, congratulations. Yeah, that's very good.
That's about it.
All right. Any questions? Well, thank you for your efforts, Justin. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to a public hearing. And the public hearing allows the uh for the comment on the proposed assessment of unpaid municipal services and or municipal us utilities. The final tax assessment rolls will be approved by the council and sent to the Pipestone County in uh November. So I'd entertain a motion to open the public hearing at this time.
So move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor and okay by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, our opposed is no and the motion carries. So a public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here that would like to comment? Did we receive any uh written or um electronic correspondence? None?
We didn't receive any.
All right. Well, we've had our listener packet. There's additional information here at our desk. And uh, it it's one of those things. Yeah, it's too bad that we have bills that uh we need to try to collect on. And uh, some of these are probably a no fault of the owner at all, but uh some of them may be just uh something they they neglect to do. So this is a reminder, this is the process to uh um try to collect on those uh utilities that uh aren't paid. So with no other information and no one here to uh respond to the public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to close a public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor and okay by saying aye? All in favor and okay by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no and motion carries. Thank you. Next up is consideration of Ordinance One Sixty, the fourth series. Ordinance One Sixty Fourth Series is an ordinance repealing the prohibition of the sale of edible cannabinoid products in the city of Pipestone. The ordinance repeals Ordinance One Forty-nine, fourth series, that was adopted by the city council on August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and will allow for the sale of edible cannabinoid products within the city limits of Pipestone. This ordinance was introduced at the October seventh meeting and is now ready for council approval. I'd entertain a motion, uh, at this time. And we have for consideration, Ordinance One Sixty Fourth Series. I would call for a, uh, motion. I will entertain the motion, uh, myself for the sake of discussion. So I would move Ordinance One Sixty Fourth Series. Is there a second?
This is a formality, is all it is.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, so we have an, uh, motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? And I guess my comments would be that this is, uh, an ordinance that, uh, we were forced into by the state of Minnesota, really. Um, as a local government entity, we have no control over this or very little control over it. And it's unfortunate when the, uh, state legislature takes away control of local government, uh, for something that's, uh, i- is important of this. This is, uh, um, something that, uh, is new, um, eh, eh, for, uh, legal use. And, uh, there's a lot of questions there. There's a lot of feelings on both sides of the fence on this. And, uh, I know we've had it approved for medical use in the past. Uh, but this goes far above that and, uh, um, I, I personally have a concern about it, uh, simply because of, uh, abuse and the social problems that, that can happen from, from this type of use and, uh, um, history shows that, uh, cannabinoids and cannabis use is a gateway to, uh, other problems. Whether it's social, the family unit, uh, whether it's addiction issues, um, it's out there. But anyway, that's just my personal feeling on it and, uh, we have the ordinance here, fourth series. Any other comments, questions on it? So I would go ahead, Deb.
Just to take that one step further, as it's been, uh, said further on in the memorandum, that per the Minnesota statute, as Dan said, effective October second, twenty-twenty-three, um, establishments, including exclusive liquor stores, have been able to sell cannabinoids, which is your lower potency THC drinks and edibles. And so at the advice of our city attorney, we were just doing this to just repeal the ordinance. We had that moratorium in place to, um, ban the sale of the cannabinoids, but that was taken away October second, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, so, uh, any other comments, question?
Is, uh, the sale of this to someone over twenty-one or is it? What is it?
It's managed like liquor. You'd have to be twenty-one to purchase it.
Any other comments?
But is that correct, Troy?
And we're re-
That is correct.
Well, thank you, Troy. Um, our, our next step is to vote on this, uh, ordinance. And, uh, could you explain, uh, the pros and cons if, uh, the ordinance fails or if it's approved? Is, is there any recommendations from our city attorney on, on something like this? I know you're, you're not the policymaker. We are, but, uh, uh, with any legal repercussion if in fact this does fail?
So, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, in, in looking at this, uh, the reality that under the a lot of this with the idea that allowing that this from a policy that says determined uh, and they fly out saying they're part of the uh, you cannot prohibit uh, you cannot prohibit cannabis. Now, we're gonna see more of that once the, uh, the office of cannabis management gets up and actually sale of, if you will, the full strength cannabis. And this is what we're talking about here is really kind of what I described as the three new version of cannabis. This is the lower end, uh, of, of the cannabis. Uh, we're gonna see much stronger, uh, items, products coming online. Uh, but really, the state is in control of this. So as I understand where Jason is coming from on this, your, your current prohibition really isn't consistent with the updated law now. Uh, and so it's, it's a matter of just needing to clean up your, your ordinances to comply with state law. Frankly, if you don't, uh, adopt this, uh, it, it's likely ineffective a- as it is a prohibition that's on the books. Uh, so this really is just cleaning up and making you consistent with state law. Uh, if this fails, uh, your city's gonna be hard to comply with, with state law. Uh, and, and could raise questions with the validity of that, uh, and, and frankly, could raise
From private individuals, yeah, I would assume, not the state of Minnesota, correct? Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, I'll call the question. All in favor, uh, of Ordinance One Sixty Four Series indicate by saying aye?
Looks like it should be a roll call.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. That is a roll call vote is needed, so, um, if, go ahead, Stephanie, for a roll call vote.
Mayor Delaney?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Colwell?
Aye.
So that would pass four to zero.
All right, thank you. And, and thank you for that explanation. I, I think that helped greatly in understanding, uh, our role here, so. All right, next up is introduction of Ordinance One Sixty-One Fourth Series. Uh, this is an ordinance of the city of Pipestone repealing section eleven forty-two and repealing and in place, replacing section one fifty-three, one point one seven of the Pipestone City Code with regard to renewable energy systems. And this ordinance was drafted by the city attorney and closely reviewed by the city's planning commission over the past few months, following a moratorium that was put into place to further study the establishments, construction or expansion of renewable emergency or energy facilities within the city. On October second, the planning commission held a public hearing on the proposed ordinance. And on October ninth, the planning commission made the recommendations to forward the ordinance into the city council for their final approval. The ordinance will be up for consideration at the November fourth meeting. And if approved, will be lift the moratorium on the renewable energy ordinance. And I would introduce this ordinance, uh, One Sixty-One Fourth Series at this time. Engineering. Airfield pavement crack repair project pay request number one. And, uh, Travis, I'll turn this over to you. We have a, uh, pay request for seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and three cents to struck an airwind paving. And, uh, if you could explain that to the council, please.
Yep, so this work is for the, uh, crack repair project that was done out at the airport. The work is essentially complete. Just waiting final paperwork from the contractor to be able to close out the job. So seventy-nine thousand, seven eighty-nine, three cents represents ninety-five percent of the payment for work due. It actually came in just a hair under budget.
All right, thank you. And, and a lot of this, uh, this work is through a grant, correct, Deb?
That is correct. To the state.
Yep. All right, so I'd entertain a motion to approve pay request number one.
I'll make, okay, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other questions, discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to, well, before we leave engineering, Travis, I just wanted to point out that, uh, I've had a lot of, uh, favorable comments about Main Street and, and how that project is finished up. And, uh, it was certainly a, a long drawn out affair. But, uh, again, uh, uh, thank you for the patience of the, uh, businesses and the people who lived in that area. And, uh, it was certainly worthwhile in the long run. I think that we have a beautiful street, uh, that's gonna last for, I hope, uh, fifty, sixty, seventy years, so we'll go from there. But thank you.
Yep.
Okay, old business. Approve the street name for, uh, County Road sixty-seven. So at the advice of the city attorney, uh, the city council should consider and make a final determination for the renaming of County Road sixty-seven near the water treatment plant before introduction, before introducing an ordinance, renaming the street to allow staff to prepare the appropriate ordinance for an introduction. So anyway, yeah, we had a, uh, work session uh, last week and we discussed this in, in quite a lot of detail. Lot of good discussion and, uh, um, we have a issue here that was brought forward that, uh, we had taken over a county road, County Road sixty-seven, and it was never named as a street. And, and so it's not part of the GPS system. It's not part of any addressing system. And, uh, um, our water treatment facility happens to have a be adjacent to it and should have a proper address there. So they've been having some issues with, uh, um, uh, different items, packages being delivered. They'd end up at Fort Pipestone because, uh, that part of the street doesn't exist in anybody's, uh, information yet. So anyway, long story short, we, uh, decided yes, we do have to name this, uh, street. We just can't call it the Tar Road between, uh, um, Falls Landing and, and Good Sam. And, and so, uh, a few suggestions has come up. And, uh, I, I think that, uh, after thinking this over and, uh, um, discussions with other people in the community, I, I would like to see, and I will move that, uh, the proposed name of this street be Veterans Drive. And, uh, we're recognizing, um, uh, the efforts that we've had recently in our community for a veterans memorial in that area. And, uh, we're not specifically naming anyone in particular. But, uh, it's an opportunity that we have here to recognize these people. And we've had thousands of veterans from our community over the years. And if you go from the Civil War on up, I mean, it's just uh, amazing. And, uh, we also had a, a Civil War reunion um, near that area at one time. And we're gonna be, uh, putting up a plaque and remembering that at the Hiawatha Pageant Park, which is in that area also. So, um, that would be, uh, my motion at this time to, uh, call this unnamed road, um, Veterans Drive.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any questions or discussion?
Well, at our work session, I thought, um, uh, Joel had recommended that we leave it at, uh, Second Avenue. Uh, it's northeast with the corresponding number on that. Um, also there was, uh, heard some, uh, talk that if you wanted to name a Veterans Drive, that, uh, proper street would be the street that goes past, uh, pageant ticket booth, the old ticket booth there, that would be go around the Veterans Memorial, which would be a, a good, uh, good street to name the, the Veterans Drive. So that's my opinion.
Through the park area there.
Through the, yes.
Is, is that a street?
No.
In that parking area?
It would be if we named it and made it a street.
Yeah.
And there'd be a real, I think, it'd be a lot better place, beans that the Veterans Memorial is gonna be there. Be a good for people to go up there to visit the memorial and whatnot.
Yeah. That's, that's all, um, certainly, uh, future projects and, and, uh, certainly, uh, um, some things that need to be discussed and good ideas that will be coming up, but this is something we need to do now. And, uh, it's certainly a ball that was dropped, uh, probably about ten years ago uh, when the, uh, county and the city came up with the agreement to to trade off North Hiawatha for this, uh, County Road sixty-seven. Um, even the postal service doesn't go by county roads anymore. And, and the nine-one-one emergency services, um, eh, you can't direct emergency services to the Tar Road by, uh, uh, Falls Landing. You, you have to have a specific name. So it's important to have a specific name. As far as address changes and things like that, um, you're still gonna have deliveries, those chemicals that come into that water treatment facility. Uh, I think the issues that Joel was having was with small packages and that were coming in by, whether it's FedEx or UPS or something. And, uh, that's where we're coming into issues. But as a safety, uh, concern, I know talking with, uh, um, EMS personnel when we were discussing this and the comment was, well, we would find it because law enforcement would be there. Well, where's law enforcement gonna get their information from? If it's not in the nine-one-one or the CAD system? You know, you have new law enforcement officer, you have a new dispatcher that's not familiar with that area. And, uh, we do have a nice grid system. And we have, uh, a, a very easy, uh, system to navigate for finding locations in the community. But, uh, we do have specific names on, uh, uh, streets that aren't just numbers and that do, uh, recognize certain areas. And, uh, I, I think this is the, uh, good place to, to start. And you can certainly continue it in the future, um, when we're three, four, five years down the road. Who knows how things will develop out there, so. But this is something that we can act on today. Any other questions, comments? I'll call the question then. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
And we have a tie. And so in the event of a tie, the motion
I believe it fails.
Fails. I believe you're right.
Yep.
Yeah. Yep. And, and is that true, uh, I'll, I'll refer to our city attorney. In the event of a tie, the motion fails?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
I'll make another motion to name it Second Avenue Northeast.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have another motion on the floor to, uh, name this area Second Avenue Southeast.
North.
Or Northeast. Second Avenue Northeast. Is there any other discussion or comments? And this would be not in connection to Second Avenue Northeast. Um, this is an independent roadway that will never be connected to Second Avenue Northeast or any portion of Second Avenue. And, and so in my eyes, it would be confusing to have a Second Avenue Northeast, um, that's not connected to any other avenue. Uh, but that's, that's my opinion on it.
Well, it would correspond, the number of the building would correspond with, uh, grid in our system. So.
Correct. Right. The, uh, the building number itself is, uh, statistically correct with the, uh, corresponding um, blocks. Right. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, uh, I would call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
No. And we have a tie, so motion has failed. Um, at this point, I think it would probably make sense to move that, uh, we tabled this for, uh, our next regular scheduled council meeting. So I will make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table, uh, the, uh, naming of the old County Road sixty-seven for our next regular scheduled council meeting. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? And motion All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Thank you. Onto new business. Adopt the unpaid municipal services or municipal utilities assessments and the sanitary sewer loan assessments. And we'll need to also have a roll call vote on this for the unpaid municipal assessments, sanitary sewer loan assessments. So I would entertain a motion at this time to adopt the list as presented.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion questions? And this would be for the year 2024.
For the municipal unpaid utility bills and the garbage. Now, the sanitary sewer loans, those are for part of 2023, all of, most of 2024, and that is for seven years at zero percent interest.
Okay.
The unpaid municipal utilities and services is one year at zero percent for 2024 only. Yes.
And this is something that we do as a regular housekeeping business.
Annually.
Annually.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I'll call for the roll call vote then, please. Stephanie?
Mayor Delaney?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Colback?
Aye.
Okay. It would pass four to zero.
Motion carries. Thank you. Approve employee resignation. Public Works employee Aaron Burnett has submitted his letter of resignation, and we need to approve that. I wish Aaron the best in his endeavors, and certainly was a very valuable employee, and he will be missed. So I'd entertain a motion at this time to accept that.
I'm moved to accept Aaron's resignation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Thank you. We have to consider authorizing city staff to register with the state to sell hemp derivative cannabinoid products as allowed by the Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management in the municipal liquor store. And this is why Mike's been hanging around here, I think. All right. So, per Minnesota statute effective October 2nd, 2023, all establishments including exclusive liquor stores that desire to sell hemp derivative cannabinoid products must register with the State of Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management prior to selling any hemp derivative cannabinoid products. This is no cost to register. Currently, there are numerous city-owned municipal liquor stores and other businesses that are registered and selling hemp derivative cannabinoid products throughout the state, including the City of Marshall, the Tall Grass Liquor, the City of Laverne doing business as Blue Mound Liquor, Colburn's of Pipestone, and the Quick Trip of Marshall, Laverne, and all other Minnesota locations. And staffs requesting authorizations to register and begin selling hemp derivative cannabinoid products in the Minnesota liquor store. So I'd entertain a motion. And again, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
I'll say, I'll make that motion.
Okay, and for the sake of discussion, I will second the motion. And again, this is an area that we were saddled with by the State of Minnesota and didn't have any choice in the matter, to put it bluntly. And so other places in the state are moving ahead with this, and it's the, I'm not sure exactly how to express my opinions on this because I spent thirty-five years fighting this type of substance and use, and I know the negative sides to it, and it's lately there's apparently some positive sides, but again, that's hard for me to wrap my head around, so that's just, again, my personal opinion. Any other questions or comments?
Scotty is here, if anybody has any questions from him.
Yeah, Scott, if you want to come up and take the stand, if you got a minute, and just tell us a little bit of history about some of the other municipal stores in the area and what they've been doing and what you see in the future for this type of business.
Um, well, I got my information from Marshall because usually Marshall has just bought every product on the market. They usually have bought every product on the market, and they have over two hundred products that they're selling between the drinks and the edibles. And I got a report from Eric, who's the manager up there. He sent me a report, their year-to-date through, I believe it was October 7th, they've sold twelve thousand and eleven products of cannabinoids, the THC, CBD drinks and edibles. Their total profit margin was eighty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars off of that. So there's a huge profit margin on it. As far as for us, there's no cost to register, which is good. There's also minimal expense to get started. We might have to buy a cooler to sell some of the products cold. We might have to buy a rack because you have to keep your edibles behind the counter or in a lock case. Just things like that. It'll be, it'll be cheap, and I think we'll turn pretty good profit on it.
As far as distributors to this product, is there, are they the same distributors that you work with now, or are these new distributors that bring it in, or?
Some of our liquor companies and beer companies do distribute the THC, CBD drinks and edibles. Otherwise, there are several, if I've been reading things correctly, I think you can order it through the mail.
What's the checks and balances on it that you're getting a quality, and a footprint sees around that a quality product versus, you know, a fly-by-night product or something? Because this is so new that I think we have to tread very lightly and see how things are working out here before we really jump into this because, again, like I said, there's so much unknown, and it's something that we're just being, it's been brought to down by the State of Minnesota, and there's nothing we can do about it.
Um, all of the products, all the CBD, THC products, they all have to be tested by a third party, and there's, if you go, even if you go online and look at their products, they have on there where you can actually look at the reports for each of the products that came from the third party. Everything is limited as far as, like your gummies, you can only have fifty milligrams or the THC in a package, so you can either have ten, five milligrams, or you can have five, ten milligrams, but your ten milligrams are technically two servings. So it's, there's a lot of confusion and a lot of, a lot of redundancy, really.
Okay.
Um, yeah, otherwise, like I say, the third-party stuff, the testing is done. Marshall, Rob Brothers and Marshall is making THC, there's a place in Laverne making THC drinks, and it's gonna be a big thing, I think.
Do you feel you have adequate staff and adequate area now without any additions?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
You're on board with this?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right.
The other part of it, not so much. Yeah. And the checks and balances, this is...
It's, all that stuff is technically treated like alcohol. It's not like the, not like the cannabis where you have to basically track it from seed to use. It's a lot more lenient than what cannabis is.
All right. If we approve this, and, you know, to use the words of Troy up there, that this is like the three-two product.
Yep.
Is there other areas in the city of Pipestone that can apply for registration?
Oh, yeah.
And are we limiting that, or can we limit it?
We can't.
The State of Minnesota is entirely in charge of that.
Colburn's is already registered.
Colburn's is registered, and Quick Trip has already talked to us. We can't control any part of it. That's all through the state.
Okay. Is there any additional expense for you as far as staffing or training or anything with your staff?
No.
Okay.
No. The only expense, like I say, would be if we had to buy a cooler or something to keep it cold and, um, a rack for edibles.
Okay. Is there any stipulations as far as where it can be sold? Does it have to be behind a counter, or can it be on a shelf?
Edibles have to be behind the counter or in a lock case.
Okay. So it's not gonna be sitting at a convenience store beside candy bars, for example?
Not supposed to be.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Yeah, again, this is the world we live in, and this is the, the information we're given, so we need to make a decision. So we have a motion on the floor, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Declare Harmon Park's sports court surplus property. And Robert Peterson, he's our recreational director, would like to sell the sports court panels that were removed from the Harmon Park when the new pickleball court was installed, and to sell them, they need to be declared surplus property. We did have some pictures in our packet on our computer, they were all upside down, but in the packet, they look a lot easier to see, and that, these are some valuable pieces of equipment, if in fact you wanted to put together a, three tennis courts, basically, isn't it? Yeah.
Yep.
And so my concern is declaring them surplus to sell, and I think we need to have some minimum numbers on it. I think we need to research a little bit what they would be selling for, and we should reach out to the small communities in the surrounding area to see if they are interested in it before just putting it online and, you know, giving it away to somebody that wants to use it for horse stalls or something. Yeah, that's my just concern, and maybe I'm overthinking it, but that's all something that I was thinking about with this, so.
We can check with the smaller cities, that's, that's not a problem, but you're still gonna have to declare it surplus property.
And maybe even the school districts are, would be interested in something like this because I, I know that this was donated to the city of Pipestone and for recreational use, and actually, it was just a turn of events where the popularity of tennis was way under the popularity of pickleball, and so this decision was made to go with pickleball courts in that area. But this is, there's nothing wrong with this equipment, and it certainly could be used, and I would like to see it, since it was donated property, used for recreation in another community if we're not interested in using it any further, so.
I believe that is the intent, and when I talked to Robert Peterson about this, he had said that he had checked with where they had gotten the sport court from, and they thought it could be worth up to seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that, that would be, you would have to, to get that kind of money for it, you'd have to declare it surplus property.
Okay. So I'd entertain the motion?
So I move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and any other discussion or questions? I guess I will leave it up to our recreational director, Robert Peterson, to find the best use for him, and I certainly have confidence in him, he will do that, and I'm glad that there has been discussion to kinda relieve some of my thoughts on that, so thank you. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Council liaison reports, the Human Rights Commission. We met last Tuesday, we didn't have a quorum, we didn't get any business done, but we had some nice conversation, and that's the type of commission where it doesn't show in our minutes, it doesn't show that we're actually doing something because, but just getting those groups together, and they're diverse groups, and just talking and learning about other groups, and it's so valuable. I am so lucky to be part of that commission, and I really enjoy those meetings, and it seems like I learn something every time, whenever we get together, so hopefully we'll have a quorum the next time around and we can have an official report, so. Hiawatha Pageant Commission, we met there, and the, the Civil War Memorial, it's not a Civil War Memorial, it's more of a Civil War recognition statue, that should be placed at Hiawatha Pageant Park shortly, and when I say statue, it's really not that because it's just, it's a plaque with, that looks like a Civil War fence type scenario, so it doesn't indicate a person or anything, but that should be placed, and we discussed a little bit about the quality of the park, the pond there, and the water table has come up, but even with the dry months that we had the last three or four, it is better than it was last year, and there's the quality of the fish in there. They've had some real good luck with fishing, the people that have been using that area, and of course, they're gearing up for lights at the lodge now, and I, I think Mick was gonna go ahead and apply for the grants that we were talking about to help fund some of that because they're always thinking of new ideas and new lights that they'd like to see, and that's a very popular setup that they put together, and that'll be starting the end of November, and we'll have more information on that. And as far as the use of the lodge, and it seems to be booked and being used, and things are going well there, so. Park and Recreation Commission.
That would be Danielle, and she's out today.
And Danielle is out, so we'll have to skip over that. And then Planning Commission, well, again, sorry, that's me again, so, getting sick of hearing from me, probably, but anyway, I couldn't make it to the last Planning Commission meeting. We had one on the first Wednesday of October and the second Wednesday of October, and the first one, of course, we talked about already, was where they were discussing the ordinance on the prohibition of the electrical panels and things like that, and we've moved ahead with that, so you're all aware on that. The last meeting was a proposal for a variance on a building, and I think the Planning Commission approved that also, and that was an additional garage structure at the Jan Kennedy Residence, and that would fit into the neighborhood according to the Planning Commission, so that was a business there, and Solomon kept me up to date on that. He's doing a good job with the Planning Commission, he's very helpful explaining to them. They ended up tabling some information because we got from a private individual, we had some questions come up on the size of some of these solar panel fields, and that was clarified by our city attorney, and I certainly appreciate the information that came back that way, and the ordinance that Jason had drafted was a good ordinance, and there was no need to change anything there, so glad that went through like it did, so that's my report on the Planning Commission. Closing comments? Any closing comments? Well, again, sorry. I've got the 2024 Fall Leaf Pickup, and the first round of the leaf pickup will begin October 28th, and another round will begin on November 4th. So rake leaves to the gutter by 6:00 AM on Monday, and October 28th, they'll come around, and it's a vacuum cleaner type device that sucks up those leaves, and so we can't have them in bags, they have to be loose and get them to the curb, as close to the curb as possible, into the street area, so off the boulevard into the curb. And make sure you don't have your vehicle parked in that area then on October 28th or November 4th, because when that machine comes around, it's a pretty good size, and if you got your vehicle parked there, your neighbor's vehicle's parked there, or if you got your garbage dumpster bin laying out there yet and you haven't brought it in, they're gonna have to go around it, and then you're gonna have a pile of leaves there in front of your driveway that's gonna blow down into your neighbor's yard, and that's not gonna make them happy, so. Just something to think about, and it's a service that we provide, and it saves a lot of effort, there's a lot of people that don't have ways to get them out to the compost pile. You can certainly take them out there if you want to, but this is, again, another avenue that the city of Pipestone is presenting to get rid of those leaves, so.
Make sure they have their sticks and branches and rocks out of that, though.
Yeah. No sticks, branches, or rocks. This is for leaf pickup only. That's correct. Yep. Thank you, Scott. Any other closing comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We're adjourned.
Thank you, Troy.